I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
The roll call, please.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Durfee.
Present.
Counselor Bowlin.
Yeah.
Counselor Leonard.
Present.
Counselor Rodrick and Counselor Costa are absent.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes from the regular council meeting April 26, 2010. Counselor Ruda abstained, absent. Approval of executive session minutes of April 26, 2010. Counselor Ruda abstained, absent. Approval of minutes from special council meeting May 4, 2010. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. School committee, five. Arts council. Waste water management commission. Municipal building advisory committee. Correspondence received and filed. Resolutions received. One, opposing mandatory binding arbitration legislation from the school committee of North Smithfield and Bristol Warren. Opposing contract continuation for school committees of Bristol Warren, North Smithfield, and Foster Town Councils. Encouraging return of 34th Annual America's Cup Challenge to Newport from Town Council of Middletown-Jamestown. Supporting House Bill 7014, bridge safety from Town of Jamestown. Requesting General Assembly vacate financial mandates pertaining to municipal and school employees' pensions, health insurance cost-sharing, and school healthcare benefits. Also resolved, towns and cities implement budget articles known as municipal tools. Calling for reduction at local levels equal to state workers from Town of Portsmouth. Receive from Warren Town Council proclaiming May Mental Health Month. Invitation received from Town Council of Jamestown regarding Congress of Councils to discuss and strategize defeat of HSLNG in Mount Hope Bay. Received from Gary Plunkett, Tiverton representative to East Bay Energy Consortium feasibility study status report. Received from City of Forver, Chief of Fire Department thanking Tiverton for mutual aid. Received from Bobby Alcott for regarding enforcement of no dirt bikes or all-terrain vehicles in nature trails. Tiverton Yacht Club requests zoning ordinance, ordinance text, and MAP amendment continued from April 26. Ethics advisory opinion expected May 18. Scheduled public hearing for June 14, 2010, and the planning board's recommendation. Report received from Treasurer Di Matteo regarding investments. Alex Kechko requests annual approval for 5K walk and bike ride memorial for John Tulen on July 31st with rain date of August 7th subject to meeting police chief requirement and root approval. Chief's memo attached, the approval of public hearing for noise variance at 69 nanocg and on July 31st for live music on June 14th continued from April 26 meeting. And that's tonight's consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Prior to that, I've been asked by a person in the audience to remove item four, the invitation received from the Town Council of Jamestown, so I will do that as requested.
Then make a motion to approve everything other than item four about the invitation from Jamestown.
I have a motion.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor? Okay, we'll move to four, the invitation received from the Town Council of Jamestown.
Laura Abkinek wrote, "I requested this be taken off of the consent agenda. I was just curious if the council plans on participating on this responding to the invitation and who will go." I think it's important.
Mr. Counselor?
If the council needs more time to determine, I can make sure, I can contact with them, make sure what date they'll be having it, and you can always email me and let me know. I'll send out a [inaudible].
That's the best we're gonna do right now.
Okay.
Excuse me, 10B, are those dates switched?
The public hearing is gonna be on June 14. The actual event is on July 31st.
What's in question here is that letter that was sent to us, "We, the members of the Town Council of Jamestown, wish to extend to each council member from the towns and cities of Newport County, Rhode Island, an invitation to participate in a Congress of Councils meeting on the potential responses to the proposed Hess LNG terminal in Mount Hope Bay. Jamestown is clear in its opposition to the planned LNG terminal and the transport of LNG by tanker ships through the bay. We feel this activity could be more appropriately be done with an offshore terminal facility. Our desire is to bring together the councils from the whole of Newport County to discuss and strategize on ways toward, way forward to defeat, finally, the efforts of Hess LNG to build a permanent terminal in Mount Hope Bay with the company and tanker traffic it would bring. We are therefore proposing to host a Congress of Councils meeting in Jamestown during the week of June 21st or July 12th. We hope an outcome from this meeting will be a joint statement of opposition and clear plan to move forward that results in the withdrawal by Hess of their plans for this LNG terminal. Please indicate dates during the two-week reference above that would be available to meet. We look forward to having all of you join us in addressing this serious matter." So, we'll see who's available and who wishes to attend this, and I'm sure we will have someone, you know, representing us at these meetings.
It might be useful to just to carry that over to the next meeting.
Okay.
In order to, and I would like that a motion that we carry that over to the next meeting to determine who will be there.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to carry this item forward so to make determinations of who will be attending on this conference in late June or early July.
I would like to make one comment. We've, as a council, we've already passed a resolution opposing the
The terminal.
The terminal.
Yeah.
So, it isn't, frankly, I'm not quite sure what the purpose is of having a meeting when we already said we're opposed to it. I don't think any of us need to go to a meeting for the sake of going to a meeting, but that's fine. I don't object to carrying it over and learning more about it.
I just think it's supposed to lead to find other ways other than just signing resolutions, which seem to sit on somebody's desk or, you know, get
And I think when we did act, it was for the terminal beyond the bridge. I don't think we acted on the, when they
[inaudible]
Yes, for the site, right in the middle of Mount Hope Bay.
So, we have a motion and a second to continue this item to the next meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Sinan.
Counselor President.
Yes.
Am I to assume that by you approving the yacht club public hearing that it will be in whatever, you want the meeting to be, whatever venue I have to utilize? I'm not quite sure whether the school department will be open or what? Will we hold the whole meeting then, or?
If, yeah, if we're gonna have to change a venue because of size of a public hearing, then we're gonna schedule our whole meeting to be at that venue on that evening.
Aye, thank you.
Tiverton Housing Authority resignation of Stephen of Chase.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the resignation with regret.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor? Sinan. Appointment to zoning board alternates one and two. Candidate previously interviewed, Matthew Kier and Wendy Taylor Humphrey.
I could ask Madam Clerk, we've received no further expressions of interest with these positions?
I had had some interest, but they have not followed through, and the zoning official, they had to cancel last week's zoning board meeting for lack of a quorum, so they have really pushed that they need a body in there.
It was the council's pleasure.
Given the fact that we need alternates and given the fact that we don't have any other written applications, I don't think that we can reasonably expect the zoning folks to continue to where they have to cancel meetings because that places a hardship on the applicants as well as the people on the boards. So, I would make the motion that we approve these people, Wendy Taylor Humphrey and Matthew Kier, for alternates one and two.
In which order, are, you know, are we gonna have them?
[inaudible]
Yeah.
I'd go in the order that they're on the agenda, I would make
Okay. Matthew Kier one and Wendy Taylor Humphrey
Kier two.
Okay.
No, no particular, other than it's just the way it is.
Okay. There's a motion and there is a second to appoint Matthew Kier, the first alternate, Wendy Taylor Humphrey, alternate two.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor? Let's see now. Financial business tax collector, request council approval to abate uncollected taxes of $6,544.50, more reasons attached.
Excuse me, Mr. President. I just, noting, the alternate approvals are annual approvals, and they run from July to June with the fiscal year. So, this, just, I don't wanna be surprised, nor are these people to be surprised, it'll be coming up in another two months, June, the meeting, the last meeting in June with the appointments, presumably it'll be down there as reappointment, but it technically is filling the unexpired term, which only runs till June 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Any questions?
You might want to make a couple comments about why you think these are uncollectible for the benefit of folks that don't have the full package in front of them like we do.
Okay, the first item requesting to be abated is a trailer that was abandoned. It was just sitting on the tax rolls and so in a push to get some of these taxes paid. The people that have the trailer on their property have agreed to pay the taxes from the date that it was abandoned. That's the first one. The second one is a property that was actually redeemed the day after the tax sale, and it was redeemed at the treasurer's office. They received the money, but we need to remove it from the tax rolls because it was done differently than we're doing it now. That the treasurer's office received the funds, but we didn't remove it from the tax rolls, so that's the second one. And the third and fourth are tangible taxes that both owners are deceased, and we haven't been able to collect them.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, or abate the taxes for the persons named in the amount of $6,544.54.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Town administrator, Fogland Oversight Committee, request release of Fogland carryover fund for the survey MAP project account, $099098997 for $15,000.
I'll make a motion that we release the funds in the amount of $15,000 for the survey slash MAP project.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Town administrator, Fogland Oversight Committee, request release of Fogland carryover fund for the survey MAP project account, $099098997 for $15,000.
I'll make a motion that we release the funds in the amount of $15,000 for the survey slash MAP project.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Honorable Judge Gibbs.
Did you get them this?
Yes.
Okay, how about, I have one other thing that might be of interest to you. Thank you.
There'll be a short interlude while we play some music.
Was that an introduction for me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me on your docket. I'm sorry, I understand it was on your docket earlier and I missed it, so that was by, I was not here to make my pitch, but I think you all have the little flyer which says that, why we should be abandoning the master lever. I think it says, if you don't, I have, oh, yes, I guess you've got it. I think I gave it to Nancy. Do you really know who you voted for in the last election? If you voted a straight ticket, you may not know, or someone may not know, because the problem, well, I'll start in, I have a list of myths that are associated with the master lever. It's very brief. The first thing is that the myth is that it's a Republican move to get rid of the master lever. Nothing could be farther from the truth because the first person who proposed it was in 2000 when Mabel Anderson, a very reputable representative from South County, proposed it in rather strong terms, saying that it was no longer applicable. So, the second thing is that it doesn't do any harm to have the master lever, it's just a way for people to vote a little easier. Well, in fact, it does do harm, and I think you have some, I just gave your clerk some figures which show it. In Tiverton, for instance, judging from the highest, the top of the ticket, how many votes are cast on the top of the ticket, that's the, what we're taking percentages of, you will see that in Tiverton, on this first page, only 65% of the people who voted for the top of the ticket voted for your town council. Maybe, and I think quite likely because it carries through in other cities and towns, that's because you're a nonpartisan council. And when you look at that new machine, that new way of voting we have, the old machines, those of you who remember, if you put down the master lever, it showed you everything you were voting for. If you didn't like it, you could change it, you could mix. You look, you mark the master lever on these new sheets you have, there is nothing on there to indicate which candidates have gotten your vote. So, that what happens is people vote a master lever and they don't realize that they haven't voted for the council or the town committee, the school committee, which are the ones that appropriate all their money. So, it's really, it's bad. Some people realize, some people, obviously people do, but if you look through this list of percentages, and then you look at the percentages of those who have partisan councils, you'll see that there's a big drop in people voting for town councils which are nonpartisan, or school committees. In Middletown, that was where I first really had a complaint about it. In Middletown, 81% voted for the town council, which is partisan. 71% voted for the school committee, which is nonpartisan. And I contend it's because of the master lever, and I think it's pretty obvious from all of the statistics that we have run. In Tiverton, 19% of your population votes nonpartisan. That's the, the Democratic straight tickets are 1079, the Republican straight tickets are 484. This means that if you're sitting on this town council, then you're basically a Democrat. You're getting more hurt because there are more of you. You're being hurt more by the, by the master lever vote. So, anyway, that's the second one. The third thing is that people say, "Well, you could just solve it, you could reprogram the machines." Well, there are two problems with that. One is, the way the machine is set up now, if you have a seven-member council and one of your members, you only have six candidates, and somebody goes in and they vote a straight ticket, that's, if this is in the case of a partisan council, they vote a straight ticket, and then they see they've got one more vote, so, "Well, what the heck, let's put the seventh person in." By voting that seventh person, they wipe out the other six, the way the machine is set, and they don't know that. Most people don't know that. So, that's a bad thing. And so, they say, "Well, why can't you just correct that?" If you correct that, and you decide that you wanna vote, place, you wanna vote a straight ticket, and then you decide you really wanna bullet vote. If you bullet vote, it isn't a bullet vote because you've changed the machine so it wouldn't drop those other candidates. I mean, it's, you could revamp the machines, and it would be very costly. You still would not have accomplished what you wanted to do. You could also divide the ballot, because the only people that are really hurt by this are the towns, the cities and towns that have nonpartisan, because it hurts nonpartisan candidates too for other offices, but that's not nearly as common. So, anyway, it just doesn't work. We've been using this for two, since 2000. We've been voting on faulty machines. It seems to me it's time we changed. And what's happened is, if you'll look at this, there are 23 cities and towns whose councils have voted to change it. The entire, the organization of town clerks and canvassing people have voted unanimously to eliminate it. The Board of Elections have voted to eliminate it. Then there are the organizations that are sponsoring this, and that's Common Cause, League of Women Voters, Operation Freeing Government, Rhode Island Statewide Coalition, and the American Association of University Women. All have backed this. So, the stumbling block, of course, is the leadership. We've had it, and we have it in the Senate, we have the bills, as you'll see, there are bills, bills in the Senate and the House. The House bill is really bipartisan because it's Brian Newberry and Mike Mosello are jointly sponsoring it. And there have been a number of people in the House of Representatives who've signed on to the bill. I think it's 24 or 5, and not as many in the Senate. I, I'm not sure. I think the opposition of the leadership has blocked the Senate is from signing on to the bill. But anyway, I would love to have the Tiverton Town Council take a vote in favor of it. That's my pitch, and I thank you very much for hearing it. If you have any questions.
Yeah.
First, I was the last person in a row that got a copy of this, and I think two other council members did not.
Oh, I thought I gave you enough, didn't I? I, I
I just
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all, we'll make extra copies.
Okay, yeah.
Now, but let me just look at column, the SPV.
Let's see, straight party vote.
Okay.
On the first page, on the
Yes.
Page starting with Bristol, yeah.
So, the straight, straight party vote in Tiverton, and I guess this was in 2008.
Yep.
1563.
That's right.
So, 1563 out of the total did not vote for any member of the school committee or the council.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, because if they took the time after they had made the, obviously some of them voted for your council members, if they took the time to go down the ballot and mark those that were nonpartisan, then they could vote, I mean, they could vote for them, yeah.
Okay, do the, okay.
Yeah, they would have to make, if they, voting a straight ticket, they marked the straight ticket, and then if they suddenly realize that you're not designated as Republican or Democrat, and went down, and I think, I think people, there are people who have done that.
So
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Roughly then 20% voted the straight party. We don't know whether they
We, yeah.
Then voted for the council.
Yeah, very high.
But it would be, it would be
The undervote, the undervote is always a large number
It is.
On, on the council race, and part of that reason may be just what you're talking about.
I think so.
So, you know, you can equate part of the undervote to not everybody votes for the seven, which will give you some undervote, but the undervote is usually such a high percentage that there's a lot of people that
That's right.
For anybody, which I think would back up your
Yeah, the, the other thing to, that you probably wanna note is that people say that that people can't vote, they can't vote a straight ticket? They can. There's nothing to prevent them from going right down that ballot and marking every Democrat or every Republican on the ballot. It's a little harder, it takes a little more time, but at least they're, at least they're looking at who they're voting for. I think that the saddest thing is that people make one mark on the ballot and aren't, I'm afraid some of them really don't know who they're voting for. I don't know.
You make a very compelling case.
Thank you.
And I know that we discussed this about a year, some time ago, and we have not taken action, and I must say, I feel as if we should.
Thank you.
But I don't, under our, under our rules, I'm not certain I could even move, but I think we could continue this to our next
Next meeting.
And take it up.
Yeah.
It's very hard to see a counterargument. If you want people to vote for people that are on the firing line, so to speak, the council, the school committee, and, I mean, those somewhat are critical offices in the towns.
They are, they are. And you think of how hard people work to run for office and to think that nobody even looks at their name. I think that's sad.
Well, Ms., Ms., I wanted to point out that Ms. Durfee had introduced a resolution to that effect some month ago, and if she were to resubmit it, I'd certainly support it.
Thank you. What I might do is ask that this be continued to the next meeting
Good.
For a possible vote.
Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Is it possible to offer a counterargument tonight? We're very with a counterargument.
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah, I think maybe the thing to do is that Take it up at the Yeah, take it up at the next meeting. My feeling is, you know, it wasn't on the agenda, you came in to make a presentation, but we didn't schedule it for a vote, one way or the other. So, I'll just make my, I think my motion is to continue this to the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue to the next meeting. Further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor? Charlie, I know we'll see you when you'll make that compelling argument.
At the next meeting.
When is the next meeting, please?
Two weeks.
Two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks from tonight. Thank you.
24.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, town clerk, follow-up discussion and action if necessary of financial town meeting.
Actually, I placed this on just in case there were any issues, and there have to be some. I, like I'm sure many of you, have been meeting with taxpayers, telephone calls and emails all day. There were a few problems that I encountered in just the logistics between the auditorium and the gymnasium, but not as many as I had anticipated. I think we had checkers got them in, but I have been, the moderator did meet with me today, and he has requested a few changes for Saturday. I'm not sure I can get them through, he's looking for a PowerPoint. That usually takes me more than four days to get together, but I'm gonna see what I can do.
Can we operate?
Be, I'm gonna see what we can do. I prepared a spreadsheet for you indicating what has been spent for this I prepared a spreadsheet for you indicating what has been spent for this, for the May 8th meeting. There could be some smaller bills coming in, but that pretty much sums it up. And what I have invoices for anticipating on the next Saturday. You can see it's gonna come to very close to 16,000. I only had a $7,000 budget, so I'll be requesting council miscellaneous contingency money, if possible, for the $9,000.
Good luck.
The issue is, because we had some rather unacceptable behavior going on, I have received a lot of complaints with that, I discussed it with the police chief, we're going to need additional police, additional police on the, there, and the fire chief has suggested additional fire personnel there as well. Everything else is about the same. We're gonna add some microphones, we're going to add some speakers, we're going to change the screen, we're gonna try to utilize the left-hand side, bleach, left-hand side from the stage bleaches, in hopes that maybe we'll get more into the one room. I did order, or at least I have tentatively put on order, an additional 1,000 dockets, because I don't know that these aren't gonna be new people go. I can tell you, I had 1,400 dockets, and I have less than 100 of them left, so...
Anybody who picked one up last week, please bring it back with you.
I know, but I can't count on that.
I know, we can't, I know we can't count on that, but I mean, the point of the matter is, I mean, I would hope that they took their notes and did whatever in it, but...
I also have ordered wristbands of a different color, so that we don't have any conflicts there, so we will have a different color wristband, and I'm gonna try to put together what I can for next Saturday. And by the way, I do want to make mention that the only video that we have on the financial town meeting is Steve, Steve Rice's work on this, and you can see on the spreadsheet, it's really more stipend-ish for the amount of work that he puts in compared to, because anything that we get from the production company, Treehouse, that is really the use of the screens, projectors, microphones, all that stuff. But they are not videoing it for us. That would be another charge, and they are...
It wouldn't be $350, I can tell you that.
I am gonna increase it a little bit, but that's a ballpark figure there.
We should nominate Steve Rice for sainthood.
Steve, it seems to be. He puts an awful lot of work in there. He's there before you...
Even, even opening, even opening that other set of bleachers is not going to alleviate the issue that we have, that that facility, I believe, under the fire code, is at 999, or 1,000 people is all they're going to allow in that gymnasium.
Actually, it's about 940.
I think, I think I was told by Ririk, and I asked him last Saturday, and he told me it was 999, whatever it is, whatever that fire code number is, is all they're gonna allow in the gymnasium. So, unfortunately, if there's over 1,000 people, it is back to the auditorium, so we still gonna have the issue of the two venues.
It is. And I think, Don, we also should make clear that as far as, there was a lot of unacceptable behavior there that day. I met with the police chief, we're not gonna be accepting that type of behavior. The police chief will be asking anyone that is shouting out personal insults and things like that to leave, you'll lose your vote, because you're gonna be asked to leave the building, so they really should realize that.
I know. The issues may be contentious, but we have to resolve them in a civil manner, and that's what I think everybody should understand. These disagreements will be done by vote, and that's what it is, and it doesn't require name-calling, it doesn't require, you know, unacceptable behavior. And I agree with you, it shouldn't be tolerated, and if someone wishes to get that excited, they're going to be asked to leave.
Well, that doesn't only go for the members of the audience, but those people who are part of the panel and part of the people on the stage who are committee members have to restrain their, their behaviors as well, because one feeds off the other.
I don't think it's limited to anyone. I think it encompasses anybody there.
It shouldn't be limited to...
But there were an awful lot of personal insults and attacks put out there, and I think some were way beyond, and it was getting scary at points, so we gotta get some control.
You have elected officials acting in that, in that manner. It's not becoming to any elected official anywhere, so...
I can only say I am as impassioned, in my view, as anyone else is, but I did not call out names like that, so...
Well, I...
Police will be on this.
That's fine, but it, if you see that on the head table of motions and actions, I would hope at least the moderator would address those as well.
They'll be much more in tune to it, I can tell you that. They're aware of it, and they'll be in tune to it.
No, I had two suggestions that, and one of them might actually need to be put forward as a motion for a rule at the meeting, but it was a suggestion. In other communities, there's a requirement that all motions have to be in writing. They don't have to be typed up in advance, there's paper and pens there, they can be written by hand, but that any motion has to be in writing. So, then there's a written motion that can be read, when the question is, "What are we voting on?", there's a written motion there that would have it.
I discussed that with the moderator today. Like, minds, Andy.
Yes.
I did discuss that with the moderator today.
I must say, I, I think it's much more important than having something in writing. And this is where you can help, I think, the moderator, is to make certain that the clarity of the motion audibly is, because there were times when you could not hear, and that is in the hands of the moderator. First of all, people are not carrying a lot of pens and papers with them, they may have, I think, if you're gonna do that, that it should be part of the...
We put them next to the microphone. We put a pile of paper and pencils next to the microphone.
Yeah, I think that, I think you do that, and the moderator rules at the next meeting, but I think having it at a recess meeting where it hasn't been announced, I think it's more difficult. But I don't, I think the moderator has to control that meeting.
Well...
Well, he should be making the note of what the motion is, so he's able to read that.
Well, I think, I think part of the problem, as indicated, I mean, the people, those of us up on the stage couldn't hear as well. If we get to move...
Adding two more speakers for the stage, on either side of the stage.
Right. We need the monitors so the people on the stage can hear what's being said as well, because I think, I think the lack of hearing went both ways, so. And the same thing is, hopefully, we can get someone to, kinda like they have in auctions, you know, they have someone on the phone who's in contact with the people who are bidding by phone and whatnot. We need to have that communication with, we need to have a dedicated person who's communicating with the auditorium, not just me with the walkie-talkie, so that they're able to say to the moderator, "Okay, hold on, we have questions from the auditorium," and be able to feed that in so that they can be recognized, because the screen was too small for him to really see who was at the mic, if anybody in the auditorium, so...
And one problem with the screen is that wherever you locate the screen, you are losing seating there. So, we have also, I met with Dennis from Treehouse after the meeting, discussed different ways they're gonna, they're gonna put two additional speakers, one on either side of the stage to help in that way, and we're going to move that screen behind the stage and raise it so that people will be looking over the members on the stage to see it.
I don't think the seating issue's the issue. I'm telling you that even with the bleachers that were there and the floor seats, that that room was at capacity, so...
Yeah, if it hits capacity, again, we have to go to the auditorium, which creates a bit of a problem, because I stood at the microphone in the auditorium and repeatedly said that we are not getting heard in the auditorium for a vote.
Well, then, maybe we need to have one of the policemen go into the auditorium, get the, get the vote count, bring it back, bring it down to the moderator, and make the announcement to the moderator at the podium.
Which is, which means there is time. That's why I was running back and forth to the auditorium. So, that means people have to be a little more patient, because that's gonna take time for someone to walk from the auditorium back. I was doing it all...
Well, a lot of time got wasted Saturday with less, so...
Right, but we did have a walkie-talkie system at the end was working somewhat. But I have to tell you, we are also having a larger monitor for the moderator to see the auditorium, because you cannot, if it does go into the overflow room again, he's got to be able to see when someone gets to that microphone before the others. You can't just call from within the gym. We were not, and I was standing in front of it and calling, and he told me today he did not see me, so, jumping up and down, I don't know what else I could've done.
Yes, a couple times, you heard this disembodied voice, and I looked at all the microphones, and there was nobody there, so after, after looking at the...
So, you probably heard me, but you didn't see me.
After looking at the microphones, which, you know, click, 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 it only took a few seconds, but still, you had to think about it, and then, then you had to realize that, okay, that's somebody over at the auditorium.
It's not an ideal setup.
It's not, it's just...
We're trying to make the best of it.
Well, it can be, though, with more preparation and more money.
Well, no, it actually, it actually gets a bit...
Small places in this one have those types of things. They do it, they manage it very well.
You really need to have a venue, you really need to have a venue that fits the number of people in one room. That's ideally what you need to have. Unfortunately, we don't. If that's the largest venue we have, we have the capability of 1,000 people. All right?
It can be done, though.
No, no, they...
You just need to have a little more organization between the two parties that need to communicate with each other.
Right. Anytime you have to have two separate rooms to conduct this meeting, you're going to have some issues arise. We do not have a venue large, we do not have a venue large enough to get them all in one.
Right, but it can be done, but it has been done.
Anything can be done, but it doesn't mean it works the way it should.
This is the first time since 1991 that we have used two rooms, and the last time it was a true disaster. In the cafeteria, there was no communication. You know, I'm not saying it was set up greatly there, but we will try to add to it as best we can in the short time between now and Saturday.
Thank you.
Unless he calls for that vote first. You know what I mean, with some organization, some fourth party, call for that room first. Call for the vote there first, let them bring that vote in, then call for the vote in the room of where the most people is, second. So, that the people don't feel disenfranchised in that room, that they've been forgotten, and they, they were never addressed. So, call for that room first. I mean, if it's, that's the smaller, if that's the smaller body, it shouldn't take as long as the, as the larger room.
I don't know, that'd be, I think, a moderated decision, but we will do what we can and try to get it a little better than it was.
All right, thank you.
So, am I going to have a motion on that one?
No.
You don't need a motion, do you?
Well, I need something to spend it without authorization yet.
Here's another $7,726.
It's actually $9,000 of the overall together.
Well, what is this, this is what you're planning to spend this Saturday?
Right, but this year...
She had seven, she only had 7,000.
Oh, you've already spent eight. Okay.
You've already spent 84.
Well, I'll make a motion that you are authorized to spend an additional 10 to cover any other problem that we might have.
Second.
Motion made in second, and to allow expenditure up to $10,000 for the continuation of the financial town meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Don? I know, but we're not gonna further discuss, this was Nancy trying to get what she needed done.
I just, I had a suggestion. It's fine, if you don't...
Oh, no. If you have a suggestion, and it will help with Nancy with the conducting, then I think you can talk to Nancy anytime for that. I don't think it's, she's just giving us a follow-up discussion.
Okay.
Town administrator?
We have a fireman who is getting his notice that he was, will be retiring on June the 27th. And the list that we have, that was established almost a year and a half ago, is pretty much outdated. We would like approval to advertise to establish a new list of potential candidates.
I'd make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to advertise for, by our planning applicants.
Second.
Motion made in second, and discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? So approved. Town administrator, announcements, comments, and questions?
I'd like to announce that Connecticut Street will be closed to through traffic tomorrow, Wednesday, and possibly Thursday for sewer installation. We're gonna complete the sewer up to Main Road, and for excavating the road between Cove and Main, and then applying a binder coat. This is all subject to weather, of course. Currently, the Kearns Avenue and Hooper Street, Hooper from Main West to the end, are being excavated and will be completed because of result of the storm that we had, and these streets were washed out, so we need to get them repaired. So, that will also, that's ongoing right now. On another issue, we have submitted to the Energy Office an Activity 3 project, and the project is for a new boiler at each of the three fire stations, and infrared heaters in all the bays of the fire departments and, or the fire stations and the highway department. And this was a recommendation of the consultant that we hired, and that would be at a cost of approximately $148,000. So, we have submitted that application, and now it's a competitive application. We have to wait and see what will happen. That's it.
Mr. President, I have one question. Jim, I can't remember now, a few weeks ago, we submitted a request to have the 25% that, let me start over. This goes to the FEMA funds, and the, the original proposition is that the federal government would pay 75%, towns 25%. Even the 25% of the cost of the damage of the heavy rainfall was quite substantial. So, we ask that the 25% that the town pays be waived. Have we heard anything from that?
We have not heard anything from that, yet.
Thank you.
Council announcements, comments?
You know, at some point in the financial town meeting, Nancy came up to me and said, "I need a raise for a new pair of sneakers. I've been running back and forth. So, instead of sneakers, I might nominate her for the second sainthood after Steve."
I've had a comfortable pair of sneakers.
Roller skates.
And town solicitor, announcements, comments, questions?
Nothing.
Seeing nothing, we'll now move on to our executive session.
You know, before we do, we get memos from Bob Hoffman, who's still overseeing the soil contamination removal, and I must say, the last one we received, and these are public documents...
Not the one that's, not the one that's sitting here tonight. That's what executive session is, but...
Okay. Sorry.
I would expect it to be made public after the executive session...
Fine.
But I, I thought it should be discussed in executive session before.
Okay, well, just part of my agenda, and I read it with some horror, is what is going on in this alleged settlement, so I will keep my thoughts myself until afterwards.
If I...
I'll entertain the motion to enter into executive session under 4246582 litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? And to remain under 4246582, collective bargaining, IBPO, IAFF, and Team Snis?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? We're now in executive session.